And we're already live, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And indicate for the public that all members are now visibly present. Is that okay, Mahler, or you want to roll call?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you very much. And just a reminder that this is a virtual meeting due to COVID-19. And to protect our residents, all of our officials and staff, and to align with the governor's executive order to shelter at home. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconference means consistent with the state order that allows the public to address the local legislative body electronically. You're all here, so you know how you got here. To enter comments, all email comments received by 5:00 today will be entered into the public record, but they will not be read. And if you want to make a comment that you emailed to us, you may do so by participating in the meeting, and we will call on you at the appropriate time. There will be three minutes allowed for public comments. So with that, I would ask Jim Diaz to please recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. The next item on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar. These are typically routine items and will be considered for approval by a single motion. Is there anything that any member of the council wishes to pull for separate discussion? Or do I have a motion?
Move approval, Jim Diaz.
Second.
Have a motion by Diaz, a second by Catalano. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Danik calls, roll. Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Pierre?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from our Conocoastal County Fire Protection District. And we have Steve Hill with us this evening, or is that Terrence Carey? I'm not sure. I've got two different names here.
It's good evening, madam.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. It's Terrence Carey with Conocoastal County Fire. Just a sound check before we get started.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Let's go down to sharing a screen and make sure that. All right, y'all with me?
We are.
All right, great. Well, that's, that's a good thing to start. Good evening, my name's Terrence Carey. I'm an Assistant Chief with Conocoastal County Fire, and it's my privilege to be here, although I'd rather be here in person, to just give an overview for the city leaders and for the citizens of Clayton. Some little aspect of what makes Confire tick, what do we do? And then some later in the presentation will be specific data I think will be of interest to the citizens of Clayton as well as the council of Clayton. First off is we have 27 fire stations throughout the county, and we have 28 fire companies and in addition, one squad. Most importantly for you folks in Clayton is Engine 11 at Station 11 on Center Street. That's staffed 24/7 with three personnel on a Type 1 apparatus, which will, I'll show you a picture of that later, and we can cover that in a minute. But they also have a Type 3 apparatus, which is for wildfires and vegetation fires and the like. And I'll show you a picture of that as well. So, and they also, in addition there, do have an all-terrain vehicle that they can use back in some of the back country. In addition to the fire stations and fire apparatus that I touched on, we also, Conocoastal County Fire has the contract to provide ambulance service throughout the entire county with the exception of Moraga-Rindus jurisdiction and San Ramon Valley Fires jurisdiction. Otherwise, we provide ambulance service throughout the rest of the county. And generally, we'll have throughout the 24-hour cycle, 60 12-hour ambulances on duty throughout that 24-hour time period. Generally during the day, it's going to be somewhere between 35 and 40, and at night, 20 to 25 ambulances. As I, as I was touching on, we're proud of our diverse fleet. And hopefully my cursor can, you can see this. Madam Mayor, can you see I'm pointing at up in the left-hand corner here?
Yes, we can.
All right, great, great. Well, that's, that's considered a Type 1 fire apparatus. And that's probably what you're most used to seeing. That's what you have Engine 11 at your fire station. That's going to provide hose, ground ladders, and water. And that's generally for structure fires. And you'll see us taking that on emergency medicals, vehicle fires, dumpster fires, et cetera. And I'm going to move through this very quickly, but if there's any questions, because there's a lot of cool apparatus in here, and we're proud of it. So feel free to jump in and ask any questions. Right here in the middle is we have two heavy rescues. One out in Battalion 8, which is in Antioch, and then one in Concord. And the heavy rescue carries equipment for confined space, high-angle rescues, more significant types of specialized rescues. Next up is, this is called our breathing support. This is a really, it's not as very cool-looking, quite honestly, but it's really critical to us. That responds to all working structure fires. And what the personnel on that do is they'll fill all our breathing apparatus on the scene of the fire, so we can, we don't run out of breathing error. That's number one. And just as importantly, is they provide rehabilitation to our firefighters on scene. They carry food, rehab supplies, easy-ups, et cetera. Moving on over here to this kind of unattractive, green-looking color is our hazardous materials vehicle. And that's in cooperation with the state Office of Emergency Services. We have this vehicle, and we also have another hazardous materials vehicle. We have six hazardous materials specialists on duty every day that can handle hazardous materials incidents. Moving on down, we have boats. This is one of our boats that's out in Battalion 8, Antioch, Pittsburgh area. Down in the next one is Commandant 84. And you folks might have seen this out in, in your area. We use this for any large incidences that we have. And this is where we would run the incident from. Inside there, there is television screens, so we can see what's going on outside. This is all well-lit. There's radio consoles inside, telephones, et cetera. So for extended incidences, think, think out Marsh Creek, when we've had larger vegetation fires out there. We've used it for that, July 4th, et cetera. One of the more recent partnerships we developed is in the center here, you'll see one helicopter with our colors, and then you'll see another one over here doing a water drop. We've reached an agreement with Reach Aircraft, and we provide a captain paramedic, two of them daily, one on each helicopter. And one helicopter is solely for air ambulance's responses. The second one can do air ambulance responses, but they also can do water dropping. And that's brand new. They had to get signed off on that by CalFire, and that was just completed within the last days, quite honestly, the last two weeks. I think they did their first water drop about a week ago. So we're excited about that. They will be able to do hoisting capabilities, but that'll be more into next spring, because there's extensive training that goes into that. Wrapping up above that is one of our ambulances, as you see. To the left of that, water tenders. What's a water tender? Water tender carries 2,000 gallons of water. What we use that for is when we get out into areas where there's no fire hydrants. So out in the Marsh Creek area, for example, we would send this out to assist CalFire and East Conocoastal County Fire. Closing, we have this dozer here. We actually have two dozers. They're staffed, one is staffed during fire season 24 hours a day. The second one, we can staff if needed. And pretty much, we've been staffing both of them during these recent fires over the last two months. Down here in the left corner, that's a Type 3. And I mentioned that you have that at Station 11. That is a cross-staffed piece of apparatus. So say Station 11 gets a call, and they get a call for a significant, what sounds like a significant vegetation fire. They will take this vehicle instead. It gives a little more clearance, as you can see, and it's more tailored to vegetation and off-roading activities. Last thing is up here is, you can see the ladders, not a great picture of the apparatus, but we have four truck companies. That's where you're used to seeing a person driving the back. It's called a tiller person. They drive the back, but it's a very useful toolbox and provides aerial streams and for larger fires, rescue with our ladders, as well as quite a few tools. This slide here is, you're all going to probably say, yeah, no kidding. And so what we're talking about now is, is I'm still kind of stuck as an old-timer with the mindset of we're in fire season. If you talk to our brothers and sisters in CalFire, they say there is no fire season anymore. It's year-round fire season. And it, you know, we kind of feel that that's an accurate statement. We really don't get much of a break, maybe November through March-ish into April, a little bit depending on the weather. So here is just some, some points that I wanted to emphasize is we've seen this year a 50% increase over last year in grass and vegetation fires. And we're looking for continued, you know, we still have more of the fire season to go. So that's a significant change, obviously, as you see in the news, but we're also seeing it locally with larger fires and more fires. Before I start on this slide, and I can cover the last slide in this slide, is what do we do when we know that we see that there's going to be weather events? Whether it's we're going to have wind and heat and low humidity? Those are three, three things that really give us concern. So what we do is there's two ways we address it ahead of time. Is we, we do what we call upstaffing. Remember I said we had 28 fire companies on duty? We have a template that we use, depending on how the winds are, what the relative humidity is, and what the temperature is going to be. And that gives us a guide on what we are going to quote upstaff. And what that means is we bring firefighters in on overtime and staff extra apparatus in anticipation of extra fires. And that'll come up in this, in this slide as well as later slides. There's one other thing that I want to touch on that I'm really proud, our organization was involved in this, specifically our retired fire chief Jeff Carmen. We saw in these last handful of years, these fires that were occurring all in Northern California, over in the Santa Rosa area, Paradise, et cetera. And there was more of a reaction trying to get apparatus there. And our chief, with California fire chiefs and California professional firefighters, got together and said, what can we do? We, we know that these things are going to occur. So what they did was they took, they took legislation and took it to Governor Brown and at the time, and had sit downs with him and explained to him that local governments can't afford to upstaff for these events that are occurring outside their own jurisdiction. So the state created a fund, funding mechanism, where we have to apply, and it's on a daily basis. And we apply and we say, hey, there's a red flag, for example, that's going to occur. And we want to upstaff. So this is most recent red flag, we were able to upstaff, paid for by the state, four apparatus. One of our, one additional dispatcher, to give us eight dispatchers, four additional chief officers, and additional dozer. We did not have significant incidences within our jurisdiction, but what did that enable us to do? We got a call, I believe it was last Sunday night, maybe it would have been a week ago, Sunday night, to our, to one of our chief officers from the Santa Rosa Fire Chief and said, we're losing homes and we don't have resources. Because of that pre-positioning funding mechanism through the state, we had those apparatus and we were able to launch them and send them directly to Santa Rosa, and they were able to go to work. It makes a lot of sense, and I think that's something that we've seen change over the last year, that this has been in existence. And it's given us the ability to be ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve. So with that, let's talk about last October, something local. Last October, at the end of the month, October 26th and 27th, we had historically high winds, up to 75 miles an hour. During about an 18-hour period, I believe it was, we started with a three-alarm commercial fire in Walnut Creek. Didn't even make the news because of everything that happened after that. But that was, that was the start. Then midnight hit, and vegetation fires cropped up throughout the county. We went for 18 hours straight, and we had eight significant vegetation fires, as well as a mass casualty incident in, with a vehicle accident into a crowd of people in Martinez, all during that period. We were able to react to that and stay ahead of the curve on that again, because we quote upstaffed. And we also had units from outside our county that were pre-positioned within our county. So we had two additional strike teams that came from outside our county that were just here on standby. And we were able to stay ahead of the curve. I believe we only lost, I believe, one structure in Lafayette. When I arrived on that fire in Lafayette, we had fire bump in structures, and I thought we were going to lose upwards of 20 structures. I had more resources pouring in. I couldn't even keep up giving them assignments. And that's what we want when we're talking about being ahead of the curve. So that's something that was a success story, albeit we don't want to lose any structures, but it was a success story that we didn't have anybody hurt, and we were limited on our structure loss. And, and again, that was just a short year ago, and we're still in October. So we'll keep our fingers crossed for that rain this weekend. Okay. In, in the county, we have what we see as fireworks as a growing threat. This year, specifically, and we really don't know if it's, if it's COVID-related where it was just pent-up demand, but we saw throughout the California Fire Service, there was a lot of use of illegal fireworks prior to 4th of July and then over 4th of July. What we saw during June was an increase, as you see there, of 400% of our vegetation fires. And you can look across it to different cities. Clayton had one firework-related incident, and it was a fence fire that was extinguished prior to our arrival. So that's, that's a good thing for the citizens of Clayton. We didn't see that in some of the other cities we serve. As you can see, there's quite a few numbers on there, but albeit just to say, it was extremely busy. We got to the point on July 4th that we had to start sending, instead of multiple units that we would normally send to fire responses, we had to go to the single-engine responses to get to, arrive on scene, and then size it up and request additional resources, because everybody was so strapped, even with our upstaffing that we do on July 4th. Transients, this is what we've seen is a large increase of fires near transient and homeless encampments in 2019 and 2020. So what we, what we were trying to figure out is what are we going to do? And we made some good strides. Our fire prevention focused on community risk reduction activities. So what we did was we partnered with local law enforcement, with H3, which is a county agency. And, and what we did was, we said, how can, how can we address this issue? So working with these agencies, we were able to move some of the folks that wanted to be moved into hotels. They were done, moved into hotels. They were given temporary housing during COVID-19. And we actually went out and did education at some of the homeless encampments on fire, fire safety. One of the things I'll stay at the 20,000-foot view on, but is a pilot program in Pittsburgh that was started prior, in June, where there's a park in Pittsburgh that has just been notorious for vegetation fires starting around homeless encampments. So in conjunction with the aforementioned agencies, we went out and the city went ahead and put dumpsters in, porta-potties, wash stations, and made an agreement with the residents there that we will provide these activities, or excuse me, these essential items for you, but you have to keep things clean, we can't have fires, et cetera. Since July 1st, we've had no fires in that, in that park. And that's basically a huge change. We started a similar program in Martinez, and that's only been, and I believe in about two to three weeks, been in existence. So we're looking forward to continue that. It's been noticed by our peer agencies outside of this county, and people are coming to ask us what we're doing and how we're doing it. So again, that's a group effort amongst many agencies, not just Confire. Now let's talk about the city of Clayton. You'll see here your, your numbers of fire activity. To boil it down, as you go through the vegetation fires and exterior fires, we've seen, we've had two significant vegetation fires so far this year in Clayton and four what we would call working structure fires in Clayton. Again, that doesn't add up to 12, but that's, that's, of those 12, six of those fit into that bucket. You'll see that there's a reduced call volume, for example, on EMS. We're seeing that across the board, specifically during March till, March till about July. And, you know, we had a lot of people staying at home because of COVID, et cetera. So we're seeing a reduced number across, across the county in different jurisdictions as well. Fire prevention activities in Clayton. As you can see, we have a mandate to inspect schools. There's two schools there, both Mount Diablo Elementary and Diablo View Middle School. They've completed their inspections, as well as all their apartment inspections. The other groupings on there, there are none in the city of Clayton. So kind of an overview, some of these things we touched on, some we haven't. But what do we try to do as an organization to deal with this increased wildfire threat? Starting with prevention, I talked about some of these exterior hazards programs in the homeless areas. The fire dozer program, we used to have one dozer, we now have two. Crew 12, hand crew. This is a really exciting program. They are, when they show up on a fire, our firefighters are extremely happy. The Crew 12 is, there's 12 young people. They work a quote 40-hour a week, five days a week, and they respond to all vegetation fires. And they'll create hand lines for us, they'll help us reload equipment and get us back into service. They'll sit on fires after they're extinguished to make sure there's no ignition. This is so successful that next year, we're looking to expand it to two crews and seven days a week. Moving over to resources, we talked about water tenders, talked about second dozer. I did not show you a picture of the Type 6 wildland fire apparatus, but they're along the lines of a Type 3. And we just purchased two of them. They're much smaller, much more nimble, and we're, they're, the firefighters love them, so we're looking to purchase more of them. I talked about the Reach helicopter partnership. That's really innovative, and we're really pleased with that. Technology, never ignore technology. The Alert Wildfire Cameras, they're all over the Western United States. So we have the ability to pull up a camera, for example, on top of Mount Diablo. And whoever is driving the helicopter, excuse me, driving the helicopter, driving that, that camera can turn it towards the fire. So for example, if there's a fire out in, in your area, we can, we can actually pull up the camera and turn it towards the fire, and you can have a good situational awareness of what's occurring. Community warning system, we continue to work with that and encourage our citizens to sign up for that. And we want to use that to communicate with our citizens in, in the situations where we need to. Lastly, planning, we talked about pre-positioning program that's in partnership with the state. I'll talk about the Residence Guide to Wildfire Prep and Evacuation. And then we've also expanded our recall policies with our own personnel. We've actually had so far this year, two days that we've said, all hands, do not go home when they get off in the morning because of the fire threat that day. We did that last October as well. We basically doubled the size of our organization, where we told everybody, you cannot go home because of the threat that was impending that day. Okay, we're getting close to the end, I promise. Is, one of the things that we really need is the first responder. And we talk about first responders is you. It's you, the citizens of Clayton. We need you to take heed. When you get evacuation warnings, please follow them. Sign up for Community Warning System on the sheriff's website. You can just Google that, and it's very easy to sign up. Really, really, this one, prepare your home and property for wildfire. You know, I, I just came back from the LNU Lightning Complex up in Napieria, and it was just really gut-wrenching. We lost, we saved a lot of homes, but we lost 103 homes in 10 hours in, in the area that I was working. It's just a gut-wrench when there's homes that you know you could have saved if you just had more time. And you need that time because the homeowners need to prep their homes. We pull up and there's, the roof is full of debris from trees. There's trees growing over houses. There's decks that have combustible items, all of them. There's high grass around the property. You're really, you're starting behind the curve. So we really ask our folks to do that, to develop a 100-foot defensible space around your home. Develop a family evacuation plan. As you're hearing in the news, a go-bag. You don't want to be running around grabbing your medicine at the last minute. Think ahead, how are you going to get out? What are multiple areas of how you're going to get out of your home, your neighborhood? Don't just think about the one way that you normally would do that. Stay aware of what's going on. Talk with your neighbors. And two last items is prepare for the PSPS. We'll talk about that in a minute, but I don't want to belabor that too much. But the last thing is this guide that we prepared that you see here, it's available on Conocoastal County Fire Protections website and CWSAlerts.com. The last, last thing, and I covered this last time I did a presentation here, and I know vegetation fires are really on everybody's, everybody's mind. But one of the other things you can really do is please, please, check your smoke detectors. Make sure your smoke detector batteries are fresh. Change your smoke detector batteries when you change your clock. That's coming up here in a couple of weeks. I'll tell you, in my career, I've been to one fatality in a home that had a working smoke detector. And she was just older and an invalid. And it was just really unfortunate. But all the other fatalities that, that I've been to personally, the common denominator was there wasn't a working smoke detector. So I know we're really steering on and concentrating on vegetation fires, but I really have to throw that in. That's just something near and dear to my heart, and, and I would really encourage you to, to do that. I kind of just buzzed over the PSPS, but I would just say, I think we're all so aware of that is pay attention to that, sign up on PG&E's website, so you are aware when there is a PSPS, and be prepared for that along the same lines as some of the things I was covering. Thanks for your patience. I know that was a lot of information, and I'll take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. That was a wonderful overview. And yes, we have a video on our website of the presentation that was given about a year ago. So we still have that there. If somebody has more questions, certainly go to the city of Clayton's website and, and see that. Questions from the council? To you?
Yeah, so I wanted to ask, I think, you know, for Clayton people, I think the ultimate fear is probably a wildfire in Mount Diablo. So, you know, I know that you have the helicopters to drop water. I know that there's the planes that also drop the red material. How readily available are those? And how, do you frequently use those whenever there's a wildfire? Or what's the practice on those?
Great question. Is if there's a fire on, on Mount Diablo, as there was, somebody could probably help me out, 2010, maybe, I think it was. And if, if there's a fire there or out in Marsh Creek, that's called, is called the state responsibility area. So that means the states, states on the, on the hook to fight that fire. But what happens is you're going to have, our department will respond. But what happens is you're going to have, our, your, our department will respond. East Contra Costa County Fire Department, different fire department will respond. And then you have CAL FIRE out in, in that area will respond. We all work together. We all have common radio frequencies and common operating procedures. The first unit that gets on scene will do what we call a size up and a request equipment. CAL FIRE, depending on the time of day, they're, they have a high, medium and a low response level. So what you'll sometimes hear, it's a first alarm, second alarm, third alarm. That's for us on a municipal side. That means how many apparatus we send to it. Well, they'll, they'll, if it's a high, if it's a high day, say it's, you know, 100 degrees with, with 15% relative humidity and winds of 20 miles an hour. You're going to get, you're going to get resources from, like I said, the local government as well as they launch aircraft immediately. Closest helicopter, I believe will come from Santa Cruz Mountains Alma Air Attack and their response time is very short. The aircraft will come out of Hollister and also their, their response time is very quick. I'm talking minutes. Then they have, what, what will happen is they also bring an air boss and it's air attack. And they fly above the fire, above all of the firefighting aircraft. And they will make requests to the incident commander stating where we should, how we should attack the fire, where we should attack the fire, and if we need additional resources. So how, they're available right now, but we're, when I will tell you, when we had the LNU complex in Santa Cruz, or excuse me, in Santa Clara going, the LNU lightning complex in Napa going, the deer incident in Marsh Creek area going, resources were strapped from the state. So what they will do is they'll, they'll prioritize where they send their aircraft and their crews. And we all work together and we're well aware of when we're resource drawdowns. So we, if there is a fire up on Mount Diablo or out in Marsh Creek, you will have a significant response, air and ground.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jam?
Yes, one quick observation and a question. Chief, I, I want to thank you again for your very extensive report. I will say this. Back when we were having most of our activities, I think it was probably two, three years ago at our family barbecue, we had the command vehicle out. And I know all of our citizens that attended did get a chance to go through that and found that very interesting and informative. So thank you again for that. Yeah, you mentioned at the Station 11, which we're all very supportive of. You have a staff, three personnel per 24 hour period. What are those individuals? What classifications do you have of those three firefighters that are there?
Thank you for asking that, Councilman. You'll have a captain who's in charge, an engineer who's a driver, and then a firefighter. One of those three is at least, one of those three will be a paramedic. It's, it's not tied to the rank per se. But today I didn't look, I should have looked who's on duty out there, but you could have, you could have two, three paramedics on duty, but you will have at least one.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
CW?
Hey, thank you again for, for this presentation and for your service and for everything that the firefighters do. We got a lot of respect. I had a question from, actually I met with a fellow downtown, one of our new citizens. And he was very concerned about evacuation planning. And we were able to talk about some of the things that he's been through in his life, including the Oakland fire 30 years ago. I can't believe it's been 30 years already. But he had some really good suggestions with regard to evacuations, especially in places like Keller Ridge or Peacock Creek where there's one way in and one way out. Do you have any suggestions? I mean, he was talking about maybe a, a blue line to, to follow or, or street signs as a permanent evacuation. So people understand where they need to go if they're unlikely event of, of an evacuation.
I'm writing that down as a point to take back to the organization. I don't have specifics for you right now for the city of Clayton. What I will say is we have started working with some of our, our cities and, and in our jurisdictions to come up with evacuation planning, evacuation notification. So for example, I, I was just sitting in on a training seminar by a vendor who's utilizing software to divide up cities into different zones. And so they're clear cut zones, which would give you direction on how to evacuate, where to evacuate, depending on the type of incident and where the incident's occurring at. It's very interesting technology. It's been utilized in these fires this year already. Not in our jurisdiction, but we're looking at that as a tool that we could potentially use for our citizens. So I'm, I'm taking that as a point and we will gladly get back to you and get more information along those lines.
Thank you, and I hope he's watching tonight. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I would just note that when we had this discussion about a year ago then in Hoyer Hall, one of the residents asked a similar question about evacuations. And we were all told then that they're probably because of the areas up in Oakhurst primarily that are kind of one way in and one way out, Peacock Creek, Keller Ridge, that area. It would depend entirely on where the fire is. If it's at the base of the hill, where that one way in and one way out is, there probably would be a sheltering place or a evacuation using the fire roads out the backside. And so don't assume which way to go until you're told where to go. And I'm assuming that that would be the same recommendation now. Stay put until you're told where to go and go the direction you're told to go. Would that be correct?
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for jogging me in my memory. I believe that was Chief Markucci from CAL FIRE who also partnered with me on that presentation. And I, I think that was a, a good point that he had brought up. And that's, that was where I was referencing earlier is don't, it's whether you go into a movie theater or you're getting out of your neighborhood, you don't want to always just plan the same way that you always do it. Well, I came in that way, so that's the way I'm going to go out. So we encourage citizens to think, think ahead. Because obviously in an emergency, it's, we want to have some pre-plans on that. So thank you for bringing that up. You are correct and I appreciate that, that, that assist. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. That's why we make a good team. So Jeff, did you have any comments or questions?
I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for your service and especially in this season, I know. This year especially, in my business, we deal a lot with, we, fire is our number one thing. So I, I just want to say I, we appreciate your work. It's, it's, it's not easy, I know.
Thank you. And we're all rooting for rain this weekend, right? So.
Absolutely, absolutely. And hope we get more than they're expecting, but nice and slow and gentle.
There you go.
No runoff. So, all right, very good. Do we have, I would like to allow if the council is willing, if there are any of our participants, our attendees that would like to ask questions. I would take just a couple questions from our audience if, if someone wants to ask. I don't see any hands raised. Yes, I do. Dan Hama has a question. Okay, you're unmuted, Dan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Good evening. Thanks a lot for the presentation and, and all of the work that goes, you know, with the fire department. We were just, I know this is very recent and everything like that. We were just informed about Senate Bill 182 in regards to government planning, zoning and violifiers. Not sure if you're familiar with that? And do you think that that's actually really going to help out, you know, with this new Senate bill passed? That's, that's the question. Once again, thanks.
Sorry, Dan, I'm not familiar with that.
Okay.
Sorry, I can't, I can't provide any commentary on that. I apologize.
Well, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The next speaker is, or questioner is Glenn Miller.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I live up here in Peacock Creek and I actually live on the ridge. And I know that many of my neighbors are very extremely proactive in regards to the creating a defensible space. We use several different means to do, to do so. But we're always seem to be well ahead of the city's response. And I wanted to know if there is any way that you could actually publish a set of guidelines that, that would nail down the, the city's requirements in terms of getting the fire prevention work done in, in, in the future.
Is that direct, directed to me, Glenn, or to?
Yeah, yeah. You, you talked a little bit about some of the prevention measures, but, but we just kind of sit here, up here, up here and wait. And actually, we, we sit up here and we don't wait. We, we are well ahead of weed control and, and the like on, on the ridge. It's a special circumstance, I understand, but it always seems to be a, a lot late. And we also have a couple of places where it seems to be condoning activity that is not conducive to fire prevention. In other words, people smoking on the ridge and we, we would like to have some more, some more guidelines for you to get the police to enforce those.
Okay, I will talk to our fire prevention about that. I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you so much. And Dave Yorres says hi.
Tell him I said hello and tell him thank you for September 11th out at.
You got it, buddy.
Station 11 again.
You got it.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised, so we'll close the public comment on that and say thank you, thank you, thank you.
One, one more, one more comment, Mayor.
Oh, I, okay, I'll take this one last one and that's all. Roy Coria?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I, you know, there was a lot of information, your presentation and it's much appreciated. But I would like to know if, if there's a document, a big picture document that would, in essence, some have some of the key nuggets that you presented overall. And certainly it could, that, that big picture document could be broken down into certain areas that you spoke about that are so critical, very important to all of us here in Clayton. And so I don't know if such a document exists, but I think it would be in the best interest of the community and people altogether. So if somebody, or if there can be some action on that, that's true, that's my suggestion. That I would value it certainly. I would have a copy of it and no key, you know, key contacts, numbers, et cetera.
Roy, I'm going to jump in right there and, and let you know that that kind of information is all on the city's website.
It is. Okay, yeah, I haven't.
And I'll ask Janet right now if you would move that up a little higher on the website so people looking for it can find it a little quicker when they go to look for it, because this is that signal. So that would be very helpful.
Yeah, that would be great. And maybe with respect to that website, can you, I don't know if you're hearing me now, but if there could be, you know, you know, I've seen a website and certainly, but if there's, you know, information that would, that it would be from a user perspective, that you could simply go in and, and with the design of it in the sense, in the sense that I can grab some key nuggets from it. And certainly fire would be one, you know, in other areas accordingly. So that it just makes it simple anyway. Cause I've gone up and maybe it's just me, but I, I'd like to be as economic as I can with my time and, and and then be able to grab things quickly if needed.
Thank you, Roy. Yes, we will take another look at that and make sure it is concise.
Mayor, would it be possible to create a link if, if our guide that's on the screen is not there? I'm not sure.
I think it's already on there.
Thank you, ma'am.
But we will double check to make absolutely sure, but I'm pretty sure you gave it to us last year when we did the presentation at Hoyer Hall.
Okay.
And we have that and we have the video from the, from the OES department as well. So we have all of that, you know, with, with good information. So thank you very much. This is the time of year that we all must be extremely careful. And keep a, a really good eye out. So thank you for your presentation. We value having you here. So look forward to it again.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the time and questions.
Stay safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. The next item on the agenda is reports. And this is the time we get a report from our planning commission. 22nd. And who is making that report? Is that Matthew?
I thought AJ was to do it.
We have our planning commission chair in the audience that will be making.
Here and he's got his hand up. Thank you.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, hello. So on Tuesday, September 22nd, the planning commission met via Zoom to discuss two action items. For the first action item, by a vote of five to zero, we appointed both chair, vice, sorry, Vice Chair Terry Denzil and myself to the land use subcommittee. And then after the election, we're going to bring back a vote for an alternative. And then for the second action item, by a vote of five to zero, we directed staff to bring back a report and action to forward to the city council with regards to the LEAP grant and the Prop 68 grant. We're all in agreement that the LEAP grant should be put towards section seven, item 13, for the sixth cycle housing element, as was discussed by the city council at your last meeting. And then for Prop 68, we discussed ideas like putting the funds towards the community park or the possibility of converting that vacant downtown lot to a park. And then just some items coming up for the planning commission. Next week on Tuesday, October 13th, we will meet for a public hearing on the Oak Creek Canyon project. Now, this project consists of six new family residential homes. It's located on Marsh Creek Road. It's down by the pumpkin farm, but across the street. And the city posted the full agenda online earlier tonight. I don't know if they corrected the date. The date's listed as October 6th, but it's actually October 13th on the agenda. And then looking forward towards the end of the month, we're going to meet again on Tuesday, October 27th. And this time for a public hearing on the Diablo Meadows project that consists of 18 single family homes. And this one's located on Mitchell Canyon Road down by the quarry. So that's it for that. I just would, I just want to say, I want to thank Matthew, our community development director for providing us with a lot of information in advance. So it's really helped us out and we can share that with the public. So thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, AJ.
You're welcome.
Any questions of AJ? I see none.
All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. There was no Trails and Landscape Committee meeting and so I will go to our interim city manager, Fran Robesteli, to give the city manager's staff report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members in the community. Have a few updates tonight. First, start off with social media. I've been actively working with staff to try to push out more information to the community. And today we opened and launched a city of Clayton Nextdoor account. We have been actively engaging on Facebook and Nextdoor, if you are following the city. And encourage the public to follow us in these platforms. In addition, in addition to setting up a presence on social media for the city, we've also been actively tracking activity from residents to pick up on your community concerns where we can. And this leads me to a good transition for my next update about the city parks. A few things that are happening right now. One is if you were following me and, and the city on social media, you would see that we announced on Friday that the parks are now open based on the new state guidelines. And we are encouraging those who visit them to continue being diligent, wear your face mask, keep six feet social distance from non-members of your family unit, and please bring your own hand sanitizer. I'm also been hearing concerns about the condition of Clayton Community Park. We have been dealing with a feral pig issue for several weeks now. So as all of you know who live here, there are many benefits to living in a more rural, open space community, but wild animals are sometimes not one of them. The city is actively working with a fishing. are sometimes not one of them. The city is actively working with a fishing game certified trapper to assist us with the issue. Maintenance staff have also been partnering actively with the residents in the Peacock Creek area on Pebble Beach to track the movement pattern of the pigs, as we've had some residents that have been impacted by the damage caused by these pigs. We are getting closer to capturing them. They are smart animals. So once we manage to get control of the herd of pigs that is running through town, we will complete the turf repair and begin that. We don't want to repair it and then have the pigs come back in and damage it right after repair. I want to personally thank the maintenance team members for the diligent work on this. It has become a very challenging issue. And I also appreciate the community's patience as we deal with both the challenges of COVID closures.
Janet, this is Julie. Can you demote Dan, Glenn, Roy, and AJ?
Sorry. And and also, just the damage that we're dealing with. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that the most recent state regulations related to COVID relaxation of stringent rules around restaurant dining, they have relaxed our indoor indoor dining now is allowed at 25% capacity. And we currently have three businesses downtown that are serving both indoor and outdoor dining options. Mudville Grill, Moretti's Chop House, and Lollanda all have their modified dining options in play to include both indoor and outdoor. So we're happy to see some normalcy coming back in these challenging times. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Fran. Are there any questions of the city manager? Okay, very good. Then we will go to the council reports, and I will start with Jeff.
I'm primarily talking with, hold on, probably talk, give me one second. Talking with residents and constituents about just in areas of interest, including our resident intern with the city talking about what our interests are in communication plans. And so hopefully, that feeds into something that's going to go out wider later at some point. Oh, yeah. And also, the League of California Cities meeting is starting this week. So that'll, that'll be, yeah. Well, see, I'll attend the sessions while I'm also at work at the same time. So that'll be fun.
Yeah, well, I think you can look at the agenda and pick and choose the ones you want to see.
I'll designate one of, yeah, I'll designate one of the multiple monitors and just have it on while I'm also listening to actual income earning work.
I think we're all doing a little multitasking with that. Okay, so Tuya.
I don't have any official committee reports this time.
Okay, Jim.
Thank you. It's been a busy couple of weeks, and I'll rip right through these. The first was on September 16, Contra Costa Water District Board of Directors meeting, at which longtime board member Betty Boltman from Concord is retiring after 46 years on that board, and met her at a number of occasions, very knowledgeable Water District Board member. And they're going to have a huge gap to fill since she's leaving. On the 22, I went up to Oakhurst Country Club and met with the two owners, Doug Moore and Chet, or excuse me, Aya Grant. Anyway, they're trying to do some upgrades, and we put them in contact with our Community Development Director to help see about the path forward on on working on such things as solar paneling and what have you. On the 24th, attended the CBCA virtual meeting. And the most notable thing that night was a presentation by Sergeant Richania that gave a very good presentation on the status of issues within the city. And I thought that the two most important one that hopefully people recall, and that is that the two major areas of issues for law enforcement are traffic and crimes of opportunity. As it relates to traffic, excessive speed, and I gather the department is going to take a stronger action, set of actions to help reduce the excessive speed that we all seem to be having take place nearing around us. Also, the ever popular not stopping for stop signs, which seems to be another big problem. And finally, crimes of opportunity, which everybody needs to be aware of. And one of them that was really stressed was the fact, don't leave your car parked in your driveway unlocked with valuables, such as computers and all the other things. And of course, make sure you pick up those items that are delivered to your house by Amazon and so forth. On the 28, there was the League of Women Voters, American Association of University Women, and the CBCA sponsored Candidates Forum, which I attended. Then on the 1st of October, the Mayor's Conference, very interesting. And I wish to thank the mayors. I was reappointed to the East Bay Regional Communication System Board. And just for everybody's edification on that, that's a board that has members of Alameda and Contra Costa County to assure that we have effective and common communication systems between the two counties, as was very interestingly pointed out by the chief tonight, that fire and police are and other first responders are utilizing those frequencies and those radio systems. And finally, today, met with both the city manager and the chief of police regarding tonight's meeting and agenda. And I too will be looking forward to the meeting tomorrow of the League of California Cities. And this got a huge agenda. So you're right, Mayor, we need to be selective on some of the things that we attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, it has been a very busy few weeks. The Contra Costa Transportation Authority has met twice. We were informed, I got a phone call the morning after our first meeting, our regular meeting of the September Board meeting, that Randy Iwasaki will be retiring as the Executive Director at the end of this year. And so we met again in the end of the month to decide how to proceed. So we have a subcommittee that will be meeting to replace Randy. That will be big shoes to fill. He's done a tremendous amount of wonderful work for us here in Contra Costa, but he's not going anywhere. He's retiring from the public sector. And I have it on good authority that he will be working in the private sector very soon. So it's, it's a good move for Randy, and it's an opportunity for someone else to continue what he started. We've had several Association of Bay Area Government meetings. And the Housing Methodology Committee of A-BAG also met and made a recommendation, which was forwarded to the Regional Planning Committee, which then made a recommendation to the full A-BAG Executive Board, that the first of the meetings to consider that recommendation will take place on October 15. There are several of us here in Contra Costa County and in some of the northern counties, as well as a couple of staff members from Alameda County that have been working very diligently. We think we've found a way to resolve some of the issues. We are pitching an alternate baseline, going back to what we recommended at the very beginning, which was overturned first by staff and then by the stakeholders. But we are counting noses and hoping we can get enough votes to change the baseline methodology back to the 2050 planned Bay Area growth baseline that was originally put in place. Even with the same factors, it makes a drastic difference in the number of units that are assigned to the Far East and North Bay in particular, but other very small cities on the fringes of the entire Bay Area. So we are working hard to see if we can't get that presented. We've got time, we're going to get to present it at the at the A-BAG Board meeting. So we will be working on that for next week. Also attended a Bay Area Regional Collaborative Meeting on behalf of A-BAG and that same Regional Planning Committee, met with the Mayor's Conference. We had a presentation on the RENA Regional Housing Needs Recommendation from the Housing Methodology Committee and the Regional Planning Committee. And we'll be going forward with a, we already have submitted a new letter and a report from Contra Costa to the A-BAG Executive Board. Also received a really good report from the librarian, the county librarian, and some of their chief technology people on the ransomware attack that they experienced nearly a year ago, and how they can protect themselves better against that in the future. And they were already really well protected. Now they're even better protected. But lots of warnings for all of us in the public sector and private sector as well. And lastly, I would just like to say, we will be adjourning this evening's meeting in honor of Dave Atkinson, one of our longtime city volunteers, just a terrific guy, worked really hard on every event that CBCA ever put together, and certainly for the library for years and years and years as part of the Clayton Community Library Foundation. Just a terrific guy, another huge loss for our community. So we will be adjourning tonight's meeting in his honor. Okay, with that, we will go next to
Should I jump in here real quick, Mayor, and give my report?
Sure, CW, oh, did I miss you?
That's okay. Janet, you can just say, my report is the same as Jeff's. And I had a very lovely conversation with our intern for our community outreach. She's on the ball and very pleasant. And I voted. So that's it.
Did you use the drop box by the library?
I did.
I think I will make one comment that the the city manager mentioned to me this morning, and reiterate, there are two drop boxes at the library. One goes in the side of the wall of the library. That's for books. There is another one for your ballots, very clearly marked. Please do not put your books in the ballot drop box. Apparently, that's a concern. So please, use, use the
Unintended consequences. The unintended consequences of putting a drop box at the library.
Well, hopefully, the library
Well, there's no overdue, there's no overdue fines. So if you drop your books in the voting, that's unfortunate.
Hopefully, the the folks that collect the ballots on a daily basis, as two members of the library staff or the county elections staff will be collecting the ballots every day. And there will be two of them. So there's no hanky panky going on. If they find a book, hopefully, they'll put it in the opposite drop box at the library. But please, don't put them in there to begin with. So with that, we will go to public comments. And we are going to first take our Clayton City Council candidates in order. Janet, are you ready with the timer?
I am.
Okay, very good. I'm going to let you put that up. I'm going to call on Jim Diaz first, to be followed by Tuya Catalano. And go, Jim.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Again, Jim Diaz, current council member and mayor from 2017, longtime resident in the city of Clayton, and current member of the Clayton Business and Community Association, where I have been the past chair of the Clayton Golf Classic. 30 years we did that. Clayton Art and Wine Festival, but now I'm an advisor to the current chair. And I'm the volunteer co producer of the Clayton Concerts in the Grove. That's where a lot of people had encountered me, and we've had a lot of interaction. Current producer of the Clayton Classic Car Show. Unfortunately, we'll see you next year on the on the car show. And I believe most everybody has met me through any one of these of these events, because I am the one, and not the only one, but I am one that really listens to our our community. I do want to say that I want to tell you, in my view, that the real choice for November 3 is the question, do you want Clayton to remain the charming small town we have come to know, enjoy, and grown to love? Or do you want Clayton to become and fall victim to the high density, multi-story development, supported by and overseen by those in Sacramento who don't want us to maintain local control? We need to join forces with and work with those of other communities, both local and throughout the state, who want to keep city control local. I am really want to continue to have and have that stamina to stand up and maintain our local sovereignty. And yes, even take a risk addressing the unchallenged Sacramento, one size fits all direction. I look and thank for your past support, and look forward to your vote and future and continued support on November 3. Look for my website at jimreelectjimdeas.com, and my Facebook page, Re-Elect Jim Diaz. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Janet, I'll take over. That changed the time every time you put it back up on the screen. So the next speaker is Tuya.
So good evening. I'm Tuya Catalano. So as everybody knows, early voting started yesterday. And elections are certainly about choices. And local elections absolutely matter and have consequences. I want to address a couple key issues. One, high density housing. No one I know is proactively promoting for more high density housing in Clayton, including me. If reelected, however, you can count on me to keep Clayton compliant with applicable state laws and to make decisions based on facts and law. I will not vote to get Clayton involved in census lawsuits we cannot win. On fiscal responsibility, as a small city, our budget is also small, and we cannot spend money we don't have. Past city leadership and staff have been conscious and creative with our spending. And when you look around town, I think that shows. You can count on me to do my part to ensure that Clayton is able to balance its budget every year. Community involvement, I want our citizens to be involved. The vision for the city, to the extent we have discretion and say, should be based on what our community wants. For the downtown lot, I want what the community wants. And I'm looking forward to a charrette, community-based workshop process organized by a third party consultant, and to the October 20 council meeting when we discuss the procedural alternatives. On the upcoming RENA process, we need to submit a compliant housing element to the state, but we have discretion as to where we identify sufficient number of sites. It's extremely important for residents to be part of that. And in an effort to advance that objective, in August, I was part of putting together an informational webinar that discussed the ABCs of housing element and RENA requirements. In terms of cooperation and respect, as a small city, we have to have working relationships with our state representatives so that they will pick up our calls and listen to us. If we are not at the table and willing and able to negotiate, we are going to be on the menu decided by larger cities and states. Within Clayton, diversity of opinions and perspective is great and always welcomed. All of us care for Clayton, but we do better when we work together as part of the same team. Transparency and campaigning. I think the irony irony is that those who do not anticipate spending more than $2,000 are not required to form a committee and disclose their donations and expenses in detail. Four candidates have formed a committee, subject to full disclosures. Two candidates have not. In 2016, my spending was less than $2,000, but nevertheless, I formed a committee in order to be fully transparent. So in summary, how we conduct ourselves, how we treat each other, and how we campaign does matter. And Clayton is more than just one housing proposal character of the council members does matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tuya. The next speaker is Peter Clovan, followed by Holly Tillman. Okay, there you go, Peter. I think you're in. Need to, there you go.
This audio only?
It looks like your video is not showing up.
That's odd. Now, mine keeps cutting out as well, I don't know what's going on.
Yeah. Janet, can you get Peter's video on? There he is, okay. All right, Peter, time to start.
Hi, I'm Elena Cloven, and I'm a freshman at Clayton Valley. As most of you know, my dad, Peter Cloven, is running for Clayton City Council. He's coached me in soccer for the past ten years, and I respect him a lot. He looks over all information, listens to everyone, and makes informed decision based on everything that's given to him. He would make a great addition to the city council, and we humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Elena. I am Peter Cloven, and I am running for city council, I'm looking for your votes. Now, I've lived here for fourteen years, and I'm raising two teenagers, and you just got Elena, and my wife Lisa and I, we would love to retire here, and play bocce in our bocce courts well into our eighties. Now, Lisa and I, we've been walk, out walking our town, we've been putting doorhangers on doors, we're meeting you while you walk your dogs, while you water your lawns, we've been dining with you in our restaurants downtown, and we're getting to know you and your concerns. One of the things we've learned is that Clayton's a kind of diverse city, there's people who have political opinions across the spectrum, there's ages from young to old, and we have concerns, and one of them is, are we a divided town? Actually, that question came up last Monday night, during the candidates forum, we were asked, how will you heal the divide, especially in this contentious election that we're in now? And the answer's pretty obvious to me, I mean, we need to listen. I was the only candidate to say that, if I'm elected, the first thing I would do is I would reach across to my fellow candidates, and, you know, they put their time and effort and sweat and blood, they care, and they love the community in their own way, and I respect that. So, by nature, I'm a centrist and a consensus builder. That doesn't mean I don't have strong opinions, it just means my opinions are secondary to the needs of the larger community. I believe in substantial collaboration and listening to divergent opinions, and choosing actions that are benefit of all Clayton. Now, as your council member, I will reach across the divide with civility and humility, and attention to the detail to champion the long-term interests of all Clayton. Now, I've been trying to get this across to you while I do my videos and my town halls, so I'm gonna try this again, this coming Thursday night at 6:30, I'm gonna have another town hall, and I invite you to join me. No matter what your politics are, I encourage you to be attend. Just like my website and my Facebook site, you'll never be blocked, you'll never be banned, because we need that open, honest conversation to be, you know, to heal that divide. So please register with my town hall, on clovenforclayton.com, that's cloven, never for Clayton.com. I'll replay that video with all my other videos at the end of the time. Now, if I'm elected, I'll work towards healing divide and conserving Clayton's character. I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Peter. Next up is Holly Tillman, to be followed by Frankie Vidia. There's Holly, we need to unmute her. Janet, can you unmute her?
Am I muted now?
You are now unmuted.
Okay.
All right, Holly, thank you, and the timer has started.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Holly Tillman, and I'm running for city council, because I believe that inclusivity by residents, as well as transparency, transparency from our city leadership, can help bring our community together. However, none of that can be achieved without respectful dialogue. Respectful dialogue and communication is critical now more than ever, as residents have become weary of the negativity and constant bickering on social media. I have spoken with hundreds of supporters who have thanked me for addressing the key issues that affect them, such as traffic safety, racism, high-density housing, and police-community relations. Clayton is a lovely city, thanks to previous leadership, but that doesn't mean we can't make improvements. We have all been evaluated at our places of employment, and received constructive feedback that enabled us to chart successful paths forward. Consider my comments a performance evaluation for Clayton. As I shared with you several weeks ago, I'm a problem solver, and tonight, I would like to clarify a few things. First, I'm neither for nor against high-density housing. I'm deeply sensitive to our residents' desire to preserve our small-town feel, and I will always consider it when reviewing development proposals. However, I will not state how I will vote on future proposals that have not come before me. I will follow the law, and currently, there are areas in Clayton, excuse me, there are areas in Clayton that are zoned for specific types of developments. Maximum civic engagement coupled with respectful dialogue will be imperative moving forward as we navigate this key issue. Second, police-community relations are so important. I support and have always respected the police. I do not want another generation to grow up hating or being fearful of them based on what happened this summer. Although I have not witnessed profiling in town, residents have told me they have, and I believe them. Perhaps if some residents weren't calling the police when they see a person of color in their neighborhood, and assuming they are outsiders who don't belong in town, people wouldn't be approached by so often. It's unfortunate that some of my opponents and residents are willing to dismiss the experiences of their neighbors because they didn't bear witness to events, or that they would suggest that the encounters weren't harsh enough because they didn't involve physical violence, segregated lunch counters, water hoses, or attack dogs. It is 2020, and racism is more subtle than that. I aspire to live in a city that is welcoming to everyone, embraces all diversity, acknowledges that racism is thriving in our city, and doesn't ignore its existence, and that I can stem proudly with our police department and be willing to critique them when they have done something wrong. Pointing out mistakes or missteps isn't harmful, but being afraid to have hard conversations is. It's about time we elect more city leaders who will listen and represent all residents. Throughout this election season, I remain respectful and show my willingness to collaborate on key issues, as well as be a voice for the residents. In the next couple of years, we will have to make some tough decisions for our city, and I will remain steadfast in my commitment to be transparent, inclusive, and collaborative, and solve our issues together as one community. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not thank my hundreds of supporters, my friends, fellow residents, coworkers, and most of all, my family, who have helped make this a community effort, and I appreciate you all more than you know. Please visit my website, hollyforclaytoncitycouncil.com, and I would be honored to have your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. The next speaker is Frank Gavidia, to be followed by Glenn Miller. Can we get Frank's video on, please? There he is, and he's unmuted.
Do I have audio?
Go ahead and start, Frank.
Good evening, citizens of Clayton. Tonight, I want to talk to you about what responsible leadership means. While other candidates want to talk to you about issues where our city government can't do much to make an impact, I want to talk to you about things where we can. Let's start with Clayton Community Park. For years now, this park has been essentially unusable. I've sat through two planning commission meetings over the last two years, where the cost to fix it was mentioned, but no action has been taken to repair it. The fence going up to the park is falling apart. The play structure for small children is not in good condition. And most importantly to me, the grass area is completely trashed. Our city will spend money on lots on many things. Right now, our city is spending $100,000, along with paying for healthcare costs for our last city manager, who no longer works for us. The citizens have not been given an explanation what happened there. That's 100,000 we could be using to repair our park. I think the citizens of Clayton are on an explanation for what happened there. How many more years do we have to wait to fix our park? I hear a lot of talk about being fiscally conservative. What I see is our park can complete this repair, and our city has quite a bit of money set aside, and the park remains a shambles. When I was serving in the Marines, and I was sent to officer candidate school, something we were taught was to take initiative. The mayor controls the agenda. In the last two years, our mayors, Catalano and Pierce, have taken zero initiative to do anything about our park. The election of 2018 was about two major issues, the vacant lot and parolee housing. A sixteen-year incumbent was defeated for the first time in the history of Clayton. The helm of being mayor was given to council member Catalano in 2019. Given we just had an election where the vacant lot was a major issue, and given the mayor controls the agenda, an effective leader would have taken initiative and dealt with the vacant lot. That never happened. Two years later, we might see some movement on this, a committee, something, I don't know how long it's gonna take. Another issue, the folks at Regency who asked for relief in 2018 from a major problem of outsiders coming into their neighborhood, taking up all their parking on weekends, waited for almost a year to have the city council do something. Why did they have to wait so long? And there was resistance on the part of some council members. I know council member one did a lot of the heavy lifting to get some, something done for the folks at Regency. I look at how bureaucratically citizens from Regency were treated. I look at the outcome of the 2018 election with a historical result unlike any election prior to that, and the fact that nothing was done with the vacant lot in two years since the election, and it leads me to conclude, our city council doesn't listen to us. In 2018, both attendance and interest was very high, Hoyer Hall was packed. I've seen more action from this council on recent events where attendance was far less than what I saw back then. And while those, the actions that the city council has taken recently are important, the vacant lot, Regency, and our park, these are very important issues that have been completely neglected. My years serving in the Marines taught me to solve problems. Madam Mayor, at the Casa Compact Dinner, you told me a relative of yours had served in the Marines, and you said to me, if you want something done, you send in people who served in the Marines. So I don't want to tell the voters what you will get if you elect me. If you need something done, I will work tirelessly to get it done. I will not tell you my hands are tied. We can do better, that's why I'm running, and I do hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Next up is Glenn Miller. And anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment, please raise your hand or press star nine, and we will call on you in order. Can we get Glenn's video up and get him unmuted? Glenn is still muted, and we need his video.
Mayor Pierce, I have promoted him to panelist, and he should be able to speak.
Okay, Glenn, can you share your video?
Who won't let me?
Okay.
Yeah, because I, oh, I have to start video, okay, let's see if that works.
There he is. Okay, Glenn, you are unmuted, and you are on video, so your timer is starting.
Thank you, Mayor Pierce. Good evening, fellow Clayton citizens. We just heard presentations from all five of the city council candidates, but we didn't hear a lot about how your tax money is spent, and how your assessments are spent. We heard a lot of quote-unquote deference to fiscal responsibility, and essentially, over the last fifteen to seventeen years, what that's meant is, let's play around with a, with each of the little budgets and assessments, and dip in here, and dip in there, and cut services here, and cut services there. I know that because I went through a ten-year period where I knew services weren't being done in the jihad, and yet, I kept getting told, oh, yes, they are, and they weren't. We finally got an interim city manager, and a councilperson, Jeff Wong, who said, let's go out and actually look. We looked, we found that it wasn't being done, and they spent a lot more money than, than they would have had they done it all along, and so this is, this is how things are managed. I plan to go look, listen, check, check the scopes, make sure that each scope matches the, the job that the assessment district has been set up for, and see that the job is done. And if magically, if the work gets done, and some of the, some of the money isn't spent, the money stays with the assessment district. No more playing games, moving it around to the general budget to be spent on other things. That's one of the main things I wanted to talk about tonight. The other thing I wanted to talk about is, is something that, the criticism, first of all, I want to thank the people that have come up and talked to me, and said they liked my approach, and they, they were, I'm humbled, and I really appreciate it. One of the things, criticisms I did get was that my font on my sign was a little too small. Well, my font says this, accountability and results. I plan to be accountable to you, the taxpayer, the persons that pay, pay the assessments. You know, you, you can have your own moral guidelines, you can do what you want, I think inclusive activity means just do it my way, but, but let that, let that be what it is. You guys are going to work, you're paying your taxes, it's your hard-earned money, it ought to be, you ought to get what you're paying for, and that's what I plan to do. So thank you very much for your support, and I look forward to serving you.
Thank you, Glenn. And now, we will go to public, the remainder of public comment, the first speaker up is Jason Bartlett.
Hello?
You are unmuted, Jason, go ahead, three minutes.
Very much. Hi, yes, my name is Jason Bartlett, I am a new resident here in Clayton. I have moved here from Oakland, and I wanted to introduce myself to, to the city and the council staff. Thank you for everyone who's given an excellent presentation tonight, it's been wonderful to hear what's been going on in the community, and to hear the different position, the different positions of the different candidates. I myself come from a public service background, I've, I've worked as a budget director in Oakland Unified School District, I've worked as a consultant to various utilities and the CPUC, as well as the CEC, and right now, I'm currently the finance manager at East Bay Community Energy, Alameda County CCA. And so, thank you for allowing me this time to introduce myself, and it's, it's great to be here, and I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you, Jason. The next speaker is a phone number ending in 0939. Janet will unmute him.
Mayor Pierce, I am asking the number to unmute, and I'm not getting a response.
Okay, can you press star nine and see if that helps? That may just raise your hand again. Can you unmute caller with 0939? Okay, we will go to the next speaker, and then we will come back to that phone number. So the next speaker is Rosie Straka.
Test, test, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Rosie.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for allowing me to voice my experience. I'm Rosie Straka, a Mexican immigrant who grew up in Berkeley. My husband and I moved here in 1998. We have four children, the younger two attended the public schools here. I'm very proud of my contributions to the schools and the community. I was PFC president at Mount Diablo Elementary, and served other positions during their time at all the schools. I built the websites for Mount Diablo and Diablo View, created directories, and I taught computer classes for my favorite teachers when they lost their dedicated instructor. I always volunteer at the events downtown. When I heard some of the candidates say last week that there is no racism in Clayton, it made my blood boil. Because you haven't experienced it, or you have never been profiled, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. Let me give you a few examples. My older daughter came to visit one day, she is brown, she was with a friend who is black. They weren't at my house two minutes before the Clayton police were at my door asking if I knew my daughter and her friend. The police have stopped my son at our mailbox, picking up our mail. They made him go inside and get his ID. Now granted, they may have been acting on the side of caution because of all the recent mail theft, but I'll ask you, how many of your kids have been stopped at your mail house, at your mailbox after living here twenty-two years? My husband doesn't agree he was profiled, but he wouldn't know, he's blonde, blue-eyed. My son doesn't drive, so he walks or rides a bike. A neighbor screamed at him to not walk in front of his house. The same neighbor assumed that he was a criminal because the police have been to our house a few times. You know why the police were here? To pick up video footage, so we can help them solve cases. The police have stopped him for walking his bike at night. He was walking it because it's illegal to ride in the dark without a light. I would love to know how many of your kids have been questioned for walking with a bike. He was bullied so badly at Diablo View that he ended up in independent study and finished up at Olympic. He was never bullied at Olympic. They treated him with respect, and admired him for his intellect, something he never felt in Clayton. I have many more stories, some directed at me, but I'll stop here. Someone suggested that perhaps it wasn't racism, but lack of knowledge of other cultures. I would challenge you to educate yourself about other cultures, I would encourage you to learn about the BLM movement, and not to dismiss it as criminals destroying property. It has been in existence since 2012. Racism is probably not the number-one issue in Clayton, but it is here. I'm voting for Catalano, Cloven, and Tillman, because I believe they will not dismiss any issues, no matter what they are. Thank you for listening, and thank you, more importantly, for hearing me.
Thank you, Rosie. Our next speaker is Kim Newman.
Can you hear me?
We can, you have three minutes, Kim.
Thank you, I'm going to introduce my husband-
Thank you. I'm going to introduce my husband, Brian Newman. A lot of you have heard me speak a lot lately, and we thought you should hear from the other half of the Newman clan tonight. Brian?
Hello, everybody, and thank you for letting me speak. My family moved to Concord, Clayton area, in 2013 from North Concord. We were there for nine years. We came here to access better schools, safer neighborhoods, and more land, a bigger house. As two working professionals who grew up in rural towns, myself on the West Coast in Sonoma County, and Kim from Philadelphia, we appreciate the small-town life that Clayton has to offer for our small boys. Our biracial sons were confronted with strained race relations from the moment we basically moved in. My older son was called the N-word when he was in fifth grade, and he was stopped multiple times by the Clayton police when he was alone, riding his bike. It was never happened when he was with other people, only when he was alone. And then, just as he was working at Maresse's just a year ago, he was stopped by the cops driving home, and he lives less than two miles away. It was not until we moved to this area, and my sons became a bit older, that my wife began to monitor Nextdoor and other social media to ensure that we were not being profiled or being in their own neighborhood. Some people, running-for-election officials, have made every attempt to gaslight her and tell her things aren't real. I am proud of my wife, and she is a mom. She will do anything to protect her kids. She spoke out about her experiences at the June 5 peaceful BLM protest in Clayton Park. That coming together was the first time in seven years she has ever felt a part of this community. It brought tears to my eyes. A couple of years ago, I was asked by men in this community to protect the racist and sexist comments of a sandwich shop owner in Clayton. I was alarmed at how people did not think about or care about how those comments made me or my family feel. The assumption was that these comments should be defended to protect our small town. I've been conflicted about the want to give my family the small-town life and the lack of sensitivity that comes from our own neighbors when it comes to that choice. I'm here to tell you that racism is real in Clayton, but that story doesn't need to end here. Instead of denying that exists, or that candidates are only running on a platform to change things for the better or the worse, I'm hopeful that we can elect those officials who are doing their best to pull us together. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. The next speaker is De Vera. ID will get you unmuted. There you go. Start now. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Council. My name is De Vera. I'm a resident here in Clayton for ten years, and I would like to use my time to express my support for three candidates in this election year. My support goes out to Tuya Catalano, Peter Cloven, and Holly Tillman. It is for these reasons I will support them. After reviewing all the candidate websites, the candidate statements, the recent forums, and their history, it all comes down to this: consistency, honesty, sincerity, respectfulness, and kindness. They have been consistent in their message to do what is in the best interest of Clayton. I believe that they have been honest and sincere in their message to keep Clayton safe, fiscally sound, and would work collaboratively with their peers in the office, the region, the state, and the community. I trust their experience and their abilities to listen to all of our concerns. I appreciate that they don't single out just one issue over another, and that all issues before them are important. They have all demonstrated their abilities through their actions to unite us and recognize that we all can improve our efforts to condemn racism. I admire how they refrain from commenting back at the political hit pieces upon them from some of the other candidates. I appreciate that they choose to take the high road on that front. I know that housing has been a hot topic in our city. I have carefully reviewed housing issues in the city for a few years now. And while there have been some unpopular votes that some of our community disagree with, I find these votes were important to keep our city from unnecessary litigation. That in turn keeps our city functioning and our police and staff employed. One doesn't have to go far to see that many California cities have tried the Fight Sacramento approach and have failed. Tuya, Peter, and Holly have the most experience and abilities to listen, to collaborate, to negotiate, and to evaluate the best plans in terms of housing for Clayton and keep the housing number reasonable. As projects approach, that would be the time that the community, the developer, and city can come together and work with each other to devise the best project that we all can live with. And with that, I wish all the candidates good luck on Election Day. Thank you.
Thank you, De. The next speaker is Khalid. And you are unmuted. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Khalid Takia Dean, and I am a proud resident of Clayton, California for the last fifteen years. I would be remiss if I did not say that I was actually offended last week when a particular candidate said that race was basically just a cute issue and that it's not a real problem here in Clayton. And as the father of two beautiful mixed boys, I am Middle Eastern descent. My wife is Hispanic, both being Colombian and Nicaraguan. And they have faced very, very serious issues, and have actually spoken up about it on the community forums in regards to being called a sand N-word and many other colorful things by the young men and women over at the schools that they attended, so much so that my boys are both now attending high school outside of Clayton, out in North Gate, for one of those reasons, is they didn't want to go to school with the kids that actually were verbally abusing them throughout most of their school years. And I'll share a story about one of my first experiences here in Clayton when we first moved in. And it was about a year after we had moved here, I ran into a colleague of mine, who actually turned out to be a neighbor almost across the street from us, that we didn't even know. And she was shocked to see us here and said, you know, what are you guys doing trick-or-treating here? And I pointed to our house and said, you know, we're living over there. And she goes, oh, my God, you're the family from Pittsburgh. And that's what we had been labeled the year that we had gotten here. We were the family from Pittsburgh. We weren't the cute couple, you know, with the two young kids. We weren't the nice couple. We were the family from Pittsburgh. And that's something that's actually lasted with me from the day that I first heard that because it was a label. And it was a label that was put on us, you know, because we were outsiders. And even though we've been here for fifteen years, and we love our community, and we love everyone that's around us, to hear a candidate say, oh, you know, it's going to be something that the city council can't handle or is not something that a city council is equipped for, and it would be something that's symbolic in nature, damn straight, it is symbolic in nature. We need to be able to be a community that's willing to stand up, whether symbolic or through action, that's willing to say, yes, we know that there is racism in our town. We may not be as bad as some of the other ones, but we know that there are. But there are people here that are experiencing this in our community, and we will not stand for it, whether it's putting a flag up, whether it's putting a statement out, or anything else that you cannot shy away because it's an uncomfortable situation. It may not be number one on some people's, you know, agenda list in regards to what they find is important, but it is important to many of us here. And I am proud to say that I am supporting Tuya Catalano, Peter Cavallano, and Holly Tillman because they are the ones who are most aware and are willing to not just call it symbolic, but to say that we stand for all of our communities, not just the ones that I speak to. Thank you.
Thank you, Khalid. We appreciate your comments. The next speaker is Samantha Sexton. And then, after Samantha, we'll go to Scott Denzlo, and then we'll go back to the zero nine three nine phone and see if we can get that one unmuted. So Samantha? Get you unmuted? She's not unmuted yet, Fran.
Mayor Pierce, I've asked her to unmute, so I think it's on her end.
Okay, Samantha, can you unmute? And she disappeared.
Yeah. Did you want to go to the other line?
Yeah, we'll go to Scott Denzlo. And Samantha, if you can get back in, if you can hear me, we'll put you back in when you get in. So Scott, you are unmuted. You have three minutes.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it. The words we all heard as a community from our minority residents on June 5th were powerful, to say the least. And they were there for all of us to hear or to not hear. And Councilmember Diaz and aspiring candidate Gavidia proudly and emphatically state that they've never seen or heard of any racism in Clayton. Isn't this illustrative of how willing they are to listen to members of the community that wish to serve and are currently serving? We continue to hear this from them every time that they're asked. Then we hear from Ms. Straka and from the Newman family tonight. And we're all familiar with what candidate Tillman's family has been through in this community as well. Yet here we have Diaz and Gavidia digging in and choosing to not listen again and again. Peter Cloven, Holly Tillman, and Tuya Catalano chose real leadership when it came to being a part of the Clayton Speaks Race Webinar Series as a result of hearing these same exact stories. And this is one of the many reasons that I stand behind them and support them for city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. And let's go back and see if we can unmute zero nine three nine, the phone number ending in zero nine three nine.
Star six on your phone.
Star six? Okay, try that. Try star six on your phone to unmute. Hopefully, the caller can hear us. We're sure it's not on our end, Janet?
Yes, Mayor Pierce, I keep clicking the unmute button, and nothing's happening on the other end.
Okay, can the caller please try to hit star six? Or unmute? That's not working. Okay, I'm sorry. Pardon? Yes. Caller, if you would call six seven three seven three zero four, our city clerk will answer the phone and put the phone up to the microphone. So if you would try that, we'll get you in here somehow. Okay, six seven three seven three zero four is the number you need to call, and she'll try to get you in that way. Okay, and let's go back. Is Samantha Sexton back on? I don't see her. So we'll go to Dan Walsh and then Irina Liskovich.
Hi, my name's Dan Walsh. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, I just wanted to say, first of all, Jim Diaz, I support you 100%. You were always there for my kid when my son was going through his high school. He had to do a high school project down over in downtown Clayton. And he did a project. He was up on the Art and Wine Festival, a bunch of kids from high school. They did a band, and they had a bunch of music stuff going on there. And Jim was like very influential in my son's life as far as band projects. So all the stuff that has been said about Jim that's been negative, I dispute it 100%. Jim is a damn good man, and I support Jim 100% for city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The next speaker is Irina Liskovich.
I think I'm unmuted, right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, see, IT background helps. Okay, I have to make two observations. We moved to Clayton in 1998. My oldest son did not live here. He is a New Yorker. He lived on the East Coast. Three times, he was stopped right here in front of my house. Three times, the police came over and asked what he is doing here because his car did not have the license plate, the Pennsylvania license plate, and other stuff. So I didn't think it was a racist incident. Yes, he produced his New York license. Yes, we told them that, well, you know, living here, but it didn't matter, three times. Then my youngest son was just walking because he went to a private school. Three times, the police stopped him because they thought he was a truant because the vacation time was not the same. Should I ascribe any racist connotation to that? Should I have done it? It never crossed my mind. They called my work and asked me, please tell me why your son is out there when the school is on. And I said, yes, because he goes to the North Bay Arena School, which has a vacation on a different schedule, being a private school. I have not thought about it as a racist incident, or the police brutality got to bit, or anything like it. I just, you know, responded to the questions I was asked. I don't know why they stopped my son three times. They did not like his New York accent. I don't know. Maybe they like my accent. I have no idea what was the reason. But I never ascribed any race card, any ethnic card to any of these incidents. Our police department is tiny. Our police department is small, very, very small. So I don't understand why we keep harping on our police department all the time. I think they're extremely respectful people. I think they work really hard. And it's very difficult to be a police officer in our days with the scrutiny and videos and constant, constant attacks on them. I don't have anybody serving in the police department, but I just feel for our police department, being on the receiving end of very unfair criticism. I was incensed completely. I just didn't want to even speak at the meeting when a safety committee rejected Jim Diaz for the fact that he was a police officer, the fact that he wore the blue uniform many years ago, disqualified him from the safety committee. Did you hear yourself speak? That was a theory of absurd. It was absurd, absolutely. So I absolutely vote for Jim, and I absolutely will. I never put a sign, never in my life, I put a sign on my yard because politics, to me, as the former, you know, citizen of the Soviet Union, excuse me. I know what politics is. It's the dirtiest game on the planet. But this time, I did it because I was incensed. That safety committee vote was a disgrace. I'm sorry to say, it was disgraceful. Being a police officer disqualify you from being on the safety committee. I don't know how bad it could get. Just, it's hard to...
Thank you, Irina. Thank you. Okay, Janet, do you have the caller with zero nine three nine on the line?
Mayor Pierce, the caller did not call in, but I do see another hand raised from Roy Correa.
Didn't Roy already speak on this one? No, he spoke on the fire presentation. Okay, let's let Roy in.
And Roy, unmute?
He is now unmuted. Yes, Roy, you have three minutes.
Yeah, I won't need the three minutes. That'll be quick economic here. And just listening to the last minutes here regarding Clayton and the comments by community members, parents, and families about racism here in Clayton, prejudice, profiling here in Clayton. And then what I'm hearing is gathering here, there's an amount of denial. And I just can't imagine... imagine if people are hearing, if the council or in this particular, if not hearing this, then there's something wrong there. And we suggest to the council that take an action item here, serious action item, there needs to be some serious fact finding involved in the community and looking at fact finding at all levels of the community, you know, and find out what indeed, what are those findings? Is it like some people are saying, it really doesn't exist here? I'm not so sure based on what I'm hearing. And so we need some evidence, we need some data and to determine what's going on. It's serious. I can't imagine having my child being singled out or being stopped, et cetera, those kinds of things, another serious comments and et cetera. And so I think we really, the community and as leadership, need to take it this very seriously and do some fact finding and come forward to all of us, to community, here's what we found. Okay, one, and then two, begin to engage community involved in that process to make some positive, to change things. This is not where we're about, this is not, you know, this is not what we're about here in Clayton and as the country altogether, well, we shouldn't be that way, the country altogether. And so it's not surprising, I don't have a family, but I would be so alarmed, I'm just thinking about having my child drive, ride a bike, whatever, and et cetera, and then to just even think about that. So Nat, take please, action item initiative, maybe you have, maybe you haven't, but just give, you know, this is, just give it the high priority deserves and seriously, and what's being done, what's out there, what's happening? Thank you.
Roy, we appreciate your comments, very heartfelt. Okay, I see no other hands raised, so I'm going to close public comment. And we have no public hearings, we do have a couple of action items on our agenda this evening. The first one is a resolution of the City of Clayton for the Regency Rialto Drive Preferential Residential Permit Parking Program. And we have the police chief with us this evening to give the report.
Good evening.
There she is.
I'm going to try and share my screen with the PowerPoint, so let me get that going. Okay. Okay, can you guys all see the PowerPoint?
We can.
Okay, good. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint and then when you guys are ready for discussion, we'll probably go back to certain slides for decisions. But, you know, in summary, back in June of 2019, council approved a pilot program for preferential parking at Regency and Rialto Drive due to impacts caused by hikers that were accessing Mount Diablo State Park. That program has been in effect for a year now. It was amended in April of this year due to some continued problems because of the shelter in place and some of the dates, the days and times of the program were changed because there was a huge influx of people during the week. And here we are today to talk about making the permit program permanent. It has worked very well, both in its original and amended forms, the complaints from residents have greatly reduced and the parking situation has greatly improved, as have the quality of life issues that the residents were experiencing. I met with the Parking Permit Ad Hoc Subcommittee members, council members Juan and Wolf, and we discussed the particular parts of the program to move forward and some recommendations. And so I'm going to go through those and give you some of the reasoning and then open it up for questions and discussion. So originally, when the Parking Permit Program was put in place, it was for Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays only from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It was modified in April to be 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is the recommendation that the permanent program keep the modified hours of 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Since we instituted those expanded hours and days, the problems have greatly reduced and the number of tickets have greatly reduced. And the reason that those restrictions were put in place in April was because of the shelter in place and people frequenting the area basically all days of the week. And as we sit here today, the shelter in place still exists. And really, the pandemic has changed the way people work and when they work and how they work from home. And so the recommendation to keep the 24/7 is, I believe that people now, you know, just are frequenting the outdoors more than usual, you know, more than they did in the past, and will continue to do so as we move forward. The next point to discuss is the current fine for the parking permit violations. Currently, the fine was set at $45. My recommendation is to move that fine to $49. That is consistent with all of the other parking fines in the City of Clayton. And it is also consistent with our neighboring cities that I compared us to. The next point is the cost of the permits to the residents. When we initially set up the program, it was set up to be an annual reoccurring cost. My recommendation is it is a one-time cost. When I did the cost analysis between how much the permit parking program has cost the city versus the fees and fines collected, we are pretty close to break even at this point. And if we keep it at a one-time fee, it reduces the administrative costs for the police department. If we go annual fee, we have to send out letters and order new permits, and there's a lot of administrative expense and time. So I recommend keeping it, or changing it to a one-time only fee. Another aspect that was changed in April were the boundary limits of the permit parking program. So I'm going to switch to a map. Originally, the program only incorporated portions of Regency Drive, it did not include the very end where there was no homes. In April, the program was revised to include the end cap there that's in yellow. My recommendation is that we go back to the to the original parameters and open up that end cap. That will open up 12 to 15 parking spaces and will relieve some of the impact that has overflowed into the surrounding neighborhoods. And there are no homes in that area, so there's not an impact to them if you open it up. Part of that recommendation, though, is to put some delineations where the permit parking starts and ends there at the end, because as you can see at the end here where I have these little red lines, that is where most of the tickets are written. The parkers are really overlooking these signs here because there's no curb to kind of delineate the start and stop. So if we install these rubber bumpers right there, I think it's going to be, we'll see a reduction in the need to write parking tickets and it'll be, you know, quite obvious where the start and stop is. And so those are the decisions for council to consider tonight.
Okay, thank you Chief. Questions from the council first? Tuya?
Yeah, I have a question. So are the permits, remind me, are they tied to a vehicle license number? So what happens when if a certain resident who has parking permits moves out and a new resident comes in? How does that part work?
A new resident would have to purchase the room, so the permit is tied to a vehicle.
Okay, yeah, thanks.
Okay, any other questions from council members? I do see one hand raised. Two hand raised, okay, let's go to Dan Hummer first. They're lighting up, all right, let's go to Dan Hummer first. And Dan, you will have three minutes. I'm going to do the timing this time because Fran's had issues with her display. So let's get Dan unmuting. There you go Dan, you've got three minutes.
Okay, good evening. I support the 24/7 permit program for these residents. I live in Stranahan and we have the festivals downtown here, and we are inundated with people parking in our circle when these festivals are going on. We've had issues throughout the years, I've been here for 17 years, and with littering and disrespectful actions from festival attendees, it's not that big of a deal because it's a very limited time. But, you know, we overlook these occurrences as, you know, like I said, it's few and for a limited time. These residents in Regency and Monter, look to be dealing with this sort of thing all the time. And I would agree with them that this permit program be permanent. I hike all the time, well, when the air is clear, right? But I'm on that mountain like almost every single day, just for sanity reasons with all this COVID stuff going on. I used to park in Regency and they put the program part in there. I went over to Monter and it looks like they want to have that there, so I'm just walking from my house now. So there's other avenues people can do, you might have to walk a little bit further, but so I definitely support these people going through this and I really would appreciate everybody voting to make this permanent. And that's it, thank you very much.
Thanks Dan, the next speaker is Jeff Weiner.
Mayor Pierce, can you hear me?
We can, three minutes are starting now.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pierce and council members, first I want to thank you for the pilot program and taking the additional actions to help us during the COVID lockdown. Your actions have dramatically decreased our traffic, litter, and proved our quality of life and helped us to keep safe. It was irresponsible of the park to close its lots without caring about the impact in residential areas. I know the police chief had tried to do something different, but the parks refused to. Since the park has reopened now its lots, there's been no overflow to other residential areas and there's plenty of open parking in the no permit area. The pilot program has been a huge success. We no longer have the outer towners lined up looking for parking and causing all the problems we experienced previously and that we've spoke to. Thanks to our chief and our officers, they've been here for us and they've been very responsive to enforcing the law. We have paid for our permits and personally, I paid over $200. It's wonderful to see that it's only a one-time cost now. We've been collaborative and offered our permits to neighbors who may have needed more than they bought for special events. Unfortunately, the special events are very limited these days. The pilot has limited the number of outsiders who have come here for free parking, bringing in their dogs, and even entering when the park is closed. It's great to see cars turning around to leave the area and go to Mitchell Canyon. I've been behind three cars that left Regency to make the turn into Mitchell Canyon. A few others have asked me, where is 93 Mitchell Canyon Road? Now they could go to the parking lot. All trails, which you know is the leading hiking app, has posted that you can get a ticket here and that you should go to Mitchell Canyon to pay $6. That's a tremendous win for us. Hikers have also posted that, don't park here, go to Mitchell Canyon. No one is denied access. They either walk a little bit further like the gentleman from Clayton who just said, or they support the park by going through its entrance. What it does is keep hikers away during the fire closure, as opposed to last year when hikers parked here to enter the park when it was closed. The bottom line is that we now have our sanity and our neighborhood back. Please make the pilot program permanent in accordance with the chief's recommendations, and thank you for the actions on our behalf, on our behalf. So thank you so much and we hope it gets voted to be approved.
Thank you Jeff. The next speaker is Dan Walsh. We'll get you unmuted here in a second.
Mr. Walsh, if you could just unmute yourself? There you are. Oh, we're there.
You remuted it Dan, try again. There you go, there you go.
Okay. Hey, I just wanted to thank city council folks for acting on our behalf. You guys have given us back our tranquility to our streets. Initially, when we came to you guys with our issues, you listened and you instituted our permit parking. When we came to you with our issues with increased hiker activity during the COVID, you again listened to us. So once again, I'm asking that you listen to us when we ask that you adopt the permit parking permanent. It's been nice not to have to watch cars racing up and down our streets for parking. In fact, since the COVID restrictions, I can say that those hikers that have caused a lot of our problems, apparently we're no longer coming here to park. The hikers that we see now have been quite considerate of our neighborhood and I have engaged these folks in asking about their hikes and how far they've been and where they parked and if walking two or three blocks was an issue. Most of just laughed and basically said they enjoyed the hike and enjoyed our neighborhood hospitality and friendliness. So I hope that you guys will adopt the parking restrictions full time and I thank you very much. And Julie, thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you very much Dan. All right, the next speaker is Nancy Top.
There we go.
Yes, we can Nancy, thank you.
All right, thank you. Regency Drive has been an access point to an official Mount Diablo State Park hiking entrance at Regency Gate for over 40 years. I object to the parking permits becoming permanent for the following reasons. First, the Parking Permit Pilot Program began in October 2019 and we have been dealing with COVID issues regarding parking throughout all of 2020. If there are any traffic studies used at this time, they would not be representative of normal times. I urge the city council to delay making changes based on insufficient data. I think the pilot program should be extended until such a time as traffic and parking can be properly measured. Second, there is no justification for Regency Rialto residents to be given full-time 24/7 private parking permits on a public street. The taxpayers of Clayton should not be asked to fund private parking for a select number of Clayton residents while also being denied their right to use the parking and street they pay for. Third, Clayton should not set an irregular precedent for private parking where such a privilege does not exist elsewhere in our city or in other cities. And finally, I am one of the people that cannot walk the distance from town to the Regency Gate and have much ability left to hike. This will restrict the ability of many seniors and children to not be allowed to get closer to the park entrance at Regency Drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you Nancy. The next speaker is Mark Montiel.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, and thank you to the council for initiating the pilot program. And I really hope that you make it permanent and follow the recommendations that were outlined just earlier. And it's been a real godsend, the situation is so much more, so much better improved than from what it was. And thank you, and I fully support the program and I hope the council does too, thank you.
Thank you Mark. Our next speaker is Basam Altwell. There, you're unmuted Basam, go ahead. There, you're unmuted, Basama. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I raised my hand by mistake, but I totally support this program being permanent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker then is Margaret Aracchio. I don't know if I got that right. There you go. You're unmuted.
Thank you. You did good. We are Maggie and Paul Aracchio. We reside at 151 Regency Drive. We wish to thank the city council for approving the pilot program instituting the restricted parking program on Regency and Rialto. This program has been a great success. We also wish to thank Chief Warren and our police department for enforcing the parking restrictions. Further, we agree with Chief Warren's proposal. We urge all city council members to vote in favor of making the permit program permanent. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. I don't see any other hands raised. Oh, David Sanchez. If you want to speak on this item, raise your hand now because we're going to close it off pretty soon. So David, you are now unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening. I have not followed this very closely, so I can't speak much to it. However, as a citizen, the only concern that I have, and I hope that the council would take into consideration, is I think we all know that by blocking one area to access the state park, people are resourceful. And I heard several residents that live in that area, which I do not, say that people then went to Mitchell Canyon, which sounds wonderful, and I hope that's the case. However, my understanding from walking that particular trail up and up to the entrance near Regency is that there are other ways to get to that entrance, including a fire road off of Mount Air Parkway as well as side streets and courts off of El Molino Drive. So by sectioning off this area with restrictions, will that eventually push residents and non-residents to just park somewhere else in town, such as on Weatherly Drive or another street off of El Molino and park there? And then have a snowball effect where we're going to have to continue making restrictions for parking in all of the neighborhoods that attach to that entrance trail? Anyway, I do appreciate that. I do understand that it's a concern for residents that live there. I fully respect that, and I just hope that all of the different angles are looked at before a decision is made. Thanks.
Thank you, David. I see no other speakers with their hands raised. So we will close the public comment on this and bring it back to the council. Irina, okay. Last call. Irina is our last speaker on this.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, just, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand that the COVID-19, everybody's speaking about the COVID-19 like it's in the past. It's not in the past. It's not even close to be in the past. And this winter, it will probably cause another lockdown. There is no guarantees. So I do support, you know, the Regency residents because if that happens, they're going to have the same situation if their permit is not permanent. It's going to be the same situation that was there before, knowing people will be cooped up and then they would like to go back on the trail and they're going to start parking in the area. I understand, I mean, living in Stranahan, of course, I understand what the concerts did. But since we have not had any concert lately, we kind of got spoiled with that. But I totally support to extend the Regency Drive prefer permit parking program because COVID is with us, it's not going anywhere, and the flu season is on the horizon. And nobody knows what that's going to bring in conjunction with COVID-19. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Irina. All right, we're closing the public comment on this item and, excuse me, bringing it back to the council. So do I have anything from the subcommittee?
Carl, did you want to go or?
Well, I think you can go. For me, I think we've said pretty much all we can say on the subject, but you may have something else. Take it away.
Well, first, I just wanted to thank Carl for the work that, you know, he and I did on this, as well as Chief Warren. I know that this is this process has been going for quite some time. And it's good that we got as much information as we were able to. I do appreciate the recommendations that the chief has made. And I am fully supportive, I think, especially with the addition of the rubber parking blocks. I think that will provide some relief at the end. And, you know, the one thing that I did want to emphasize is that with pairing back the effective areas to the original limits, the intent there is to strike a balance, strike a balance between accomplishing the goal that we originally set out to do. The goal is not to give people private parking. The goal is to allow people the ability to park in front of their houses. And so these areas that are not in front of people's houses, having them still able to for folks to park in via either they're in town or they're out of town, whoever, it doesn't really matter. But providing this spaces that are, you know, outside the parking permit area, the intent is to strike that balance between, you know, having, you know, improving the quality of life of the residents as well as balancing the needs of the general public. So I do I do fully support this, and I would hope that the rest of the council would join me.
Yeah, I just want to jump in and thank Jeff as well. I think we worked well together on this, but also want to thank the residents of that Regency Rialto area for being willing to compromise on some of these issues. And I think that the chief's recommendation is now supported by the Regency Rialto residents. I think that's a win-win for everybody. And to the resident that was talking about researching everything, I think this pilot program was put into place so that we could research it. And I think they've actually had more traffic now due to COVID than we would have had without it. So I think it's a it's a needed thing, and of course, I fully support this.
Okay, any other comments? Jim?
Yeah, I just want to further support this, and I know I've talked to a number of the residents up there on Regency, and I've driven up there many a weekend day. And this has been a very, very effective program, and I fully support it.
Okay, I actually do have a question. Oh, Tia, I'm sorry.
No, so I wanted to just, you know, I think one of the concerns we had initially was sort of the spillover effect to other neighborhoods, specifically the other side of the hill on Montanair. And so I appreciate leaving the end cap open for everybody to park. So I'm fully supportive of that. And I know when we were doing the math during the initial program, one of the things we were doing is providing the ability for residents to obtain essentially more parking spaces, more permits than there were parking spaces. And I know that was one of my concerns, that, you know, are new residents able to get permits? I think Jeff Weiner addressed that a little bit tonight, and I had connected with him privately beforehand as well. And it sounds like it's actually worked quite nicely, and the neighbors have shared the permits when somebody has something else going on. So it seems like the neighbors are working also well together to make the program work. So I'm supportive of the way it is drafted and recommended by our chief.
Okay, I did have a question for the chief, and it came from actually a couple of the residents over on Mount Air Parkway. They have been somewhat impacted from the full closure of Regency, including those end spaces. So they are anxious and they are in favor of the recommendation, by the way. But they are curious about how long it will take for us to implement the change and get the bumpers in place, then remove the covers on the signs and all that kind of thing.
Well, I believe that we could take the A-frames down tomorrow and open up, you know, the end. The bumpers, I would assume, are going to take a little bit of time. I'll have to talk to Scott. But I think those are stock items and fairly easy. He told me to install. So that, I think, could happen fairly quickly. We will need to order new signs to replace the cardboard. But last time we ordered signs, that was a fairly quick process. I would just guess two to four weeks, but we could open up that end cap tomorrow.
Okay, and so I guess my other question is, the rubber bumpers, are they more visible than, I know there are physical barriers to some extent, but you can still drive over them. But is that more visible than just striping the street?
I believe so. Yeah, I think just having that little bump there and the reflective. So, you know, unfortunately, things on the pavement get, you know, things spill on them, oil spills on them, they fade. Car tires drive over them and they fade over time. So I think that the rubber bumpers will be sturdier and more visible.
Okay, great. Well, I know the folks on Mount Air are anxious for those to open up again. And I suspect the folks that have been somewhat impacted down on Weatherly will welcome having those new spaces back as well because that should move some of the parking off of those two streets. So I think it's a great recommendation. Does someone on the subcommittee want to make the motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Adopt the recommendation.
I'll second that, too.
I have a motion by Juan, a second by Wolf. And so Janet, would you please call the rule?
Absolutely. Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember De?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Paul Hardley, yes.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Grateful we could come to a resolution. That's wonderful. All right, the next item is to consider a resolution approving a two-year memorandum of agreement with the City of Clayton's Undesignated Miscellaneous Employees Unit Effective Retroactively to July 1st through June of 2022. We have a report by the city manager.
Good evening, mayor and city council. I'm trying to make sure you can see my screen. Can you confirm that?
We can see it. If you go down to the lower right corner, you can get the slideshow. It's there, too.
All right, so as the mayor mentioned tonight, I have in front of you a memorandum of understanding with our miscellaneous, undesignated miscellaneous group. And this group is made up of all of the classifications you see here on the screen. I'm not going to read them, but essentially, it's everyone non-sworn, with the exception of the police chief, who is the only sworn member of this unit. And it does not include the city manager, who is hired by separate contractor, everybody in the city council. And the POA has their own memorandum of understanding. So the contract terms, I met with the representatives for this group over the last few several weeks. And due to COVID and transition of city manager, the contract expired in June 30th of this year. But both the city and the unit agreed to delay the meeting confer required to come to terms. And so they were appreciative to be able to finally meet. And we had several meetings over the course of those weeks to talk about new terms for the agreement. And those terms are.
Fran, can I interrupt you for a sec? Can you put it to a full screen presentation instead of the two-slide mode? It makes it a little easier for people to read.
I'm sorry.
It's at the bottom there. No, no.
I know, hold on.
It's not the presenter view. Yeah, there we go.
Is that better?
Thank you. Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, it's coming up odd on my screen right now. Okay, so on this slide, we essentially have the contract terms that we have agreed to with the authority given by the city council to negotiate with this unit. And it involves retroactive back to July 1st, which would have been the start of a new contract, a 1.1% CPI adjustment. And then there are some market adjustments for this unit. For all the non-sworn positions, with the exception of the assistant planner, which is already at market, there's an additional 0.9% market adjustment, so they would be receiving a total of 2%. And the police chief will be receiving a 1.9% market adjustment with a total of 3% for this fiscal year, July 1st, 2020 through June 30th of 2021. There's also a new provision of vacation sellback not to exceed 40 hours that we have set up in the language in the in the contract. We'll be adding an additional holiday, which, I'm sorry, I have a repeat on this slide. But essentially, we have, we are adding one holiday, and that will be Christmas Eve. The city is typically closed the week of Christmas Eve through New Year's. And so the impact to the public is minimal to none. We will be closing non-essential services to the public. And then we had some administrative cleanup in the MOU. It had old language that was a carryover from the prior MOU as well as just legal cleanup related to the Federal Labor Standards Act, which drives overtime pay and other types of benefits in the MOU to just comply with the law. And then we also added all the provisions that are provided to the police chief in the MOU, and that included a 90-day severance provision. So what are the costs? This is a two-year contract. The, we have general fund and other funds that are impacted by staff costs. For the general fund in fiscal year, in this current fiscal year, it's approximately $25,000. And then that for the second fiscal year, because of the compound effect of two increases, there is an increase of CPI plus a 1% market adjustment not to exceed 2.25% in fiscal year 2021, 22. So that ongoing cost in the general fund for this unit would be approximately $51,000. And then the other funds are things such as our, we have the lighting districts, some of the other, oh, sorry, the landscape district that most of our maintenance do charge to those particular assessment districts. And so when there's increases to their pay and benefits, those impact those assessment districts as well. So that's a total cost between general fund and all funds of approximately $32,000 in this fiscal year. And then second fiscal year total of approximately $67,000 ongoing. And so tonight, I am recommending that the council adopt a resolution authorizing and approving a two-year memorandum of agreement with the City of Clayton's Undesignated Miscellaneous Unit regarding certain terms and conditions of their employment and compensation with the city effective July 1st, 2020, and it would continue through June 30th, 2022. And with that, I would ask if you have any questions.
Okay, questions of Fran? It's pretty straightforward. Looks like that was a comprehensive report. Janet, have we received any comments on this item?
Mayor Pierce, we have not received any comments on this item.
Okay, is there anyone in our audience that wishes to make comment on this item? We don't see any hands raised. Okay.
This is scintillating.
So we will bring this back to the council for action.
Well, if I may address, I want to compliment the interim city manager, our very excellent effort, comprehensive report. And I think she accomplished all the goals that I know the council had been giving her collectively and individually. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Other comments, Tia?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention for the benefit of the public that, you know, we had had a couple of closed sessions discussing these terms. So everything we're seeing here is consistent with the direction the council had collectively provided. So I'll make a motion to approve, what am I, hold on.
A resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second, Jim Diaz.
Okay, we have a motion by Catalano. Okay, we have a motion by Catalano, a second by Diaz to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Clayton Miscellaneous City Employees Unit through 2022. Janet, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Catalano?
Aye.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
I forgot, I didn't get a chance, but I want to thank Fran. This is a well-done presentation, and I vote aye.
Thank you. And Mayor Pierce?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is council items. This is limited to council requests and directives for future agenda meetings. Any requests? Jim?
Yeah, I have two, Madam Mayor. The first one is, and I got to tell you, this was very impressive when I first brought it up to the interim city manager, but we discovered that we had a, an emergency generator sitting outside of city hall. And apparently, it'd been, the weeds had grown over it, and it wasn't functioning. But it's very critical during these times when we're going to have power shortages and turning off of the power. So she's already begun the process, which why I'm bringing it up to examine if it is adequate, what we need to do to improve it, and all the things that go with, with providing emergency backup power, not only to the city staff, but also to the police department.
Okay, that sounds like that's already being handled by staff, so it doesn't really need to have an agenda item.
Correct, yeah.
By staff, okay?
My second item is one of our longtime educational leaders is retiring at the end of this month, and that's Patty Bannister, who is the principal over at the middle school, Mount Diablo Middle School. She's been with the district over 30 years and at Mount Diablo Middle School for over 17. And I think some type of recognition. I'm not sure what that should be, but I open it up for discussion.
So Jim, that's already under works, and we'll have it coming back on the next meeting on October 20th. And I've already confirmed that Mrs. Bannister is available on October 20th.
Wonderful, thank you. Jeff?
Yeah. I'd like to talk about the city assuming the maintenance of the dog park. That's currently being done by volunteer nonprofit group.
Okay. All right, anything else from anybody? All right.
Mike, I have a quick follow-up. I thought, Jeff, you had a recommendation relative to an effort being initiated in Southern California about combining cities and suggesting some changes to policy from Sacramento.
Yeah, that's true. I did raise that at the last meeting. So I assume that that will come back when it can be properly sequenced.
Great, thank you.
Okay, very good. With that, we have concluded this evening's public session, our agenda. I, we are preparing to go into closed session, and I will mention that we will, again, when we conclude our, our closed session, I'll come back and report out, and then we will be adjourned in memory of Dave Atkinson, a longtime, wonderful volunteer for our community. And we wish all our condolences for his wife Joyce and his entire family. So with that, we are going to move to closed session. And let's come back to closed session at 9:50. That gives us just a few minutes to stretch and move around, okay? So we are going into closed session. I will report out here when we are done. Thank you. See you at 9:50.
Julie, I think you're muted.
I clicked it and it didn't click, so.
All right, I am on. Hello?
Are you sound asleep?
No. Not yet.
Okay, are we on?
We are on. We are recording, and we are back live.
Okay, very good. We are coming back out of closed session, and we had no reportable action in closed session. And with that, we are adjourned in memory of Dave Atkinson. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.